I'm going to call the Butte Silver Bow Council of Commissioners regular meeting for Wednesday, November 6, 2019 to order. We have roll call, please.
We have 11 present and one absent.
And let the record show that Commissioner Morgan is excused. Commissioner McDonough, would you lead us into prayer and the purge?
Almighty God, we implore you, look upon us and guidance this night, as we make decisions which so greatly affect our community of Butte Silver Bow. Direct our thoughts, spirits, and deeds so that we please you and best serve our fellow citizens. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now is the time for any public comment on any items on the consent agenda. Seeing none, we'll move for the approval of the minutes of the September 4th, September 14th, October 2nd, October 9th, and October 16th meetings. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I move to approve the minutes of September 4th, September 18th, October 2nd, October 9th, and October 16th meeting minutes.
Second.
We have a motion made in second to approve the minutes of September 4th, 18th, 2nd, 9th, and 16th meetings. Is there anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Clerk, please record the vote.
11 yea and 0 nay.
Motion carries. We do not have any items not addressed on the agenda this evening. Under the chief executive report on the super fund, we did come to a conclusion on the talks and the way the process will work, it goes to Washington DC and the Attorney General's office and they review the entire agreement and all of the documents and there's probably over 1,000 pages of documents that they will be reviewing, so it could take up four to five weeks, we really don't know. But once they get done reviewing for form and legality, then it will get sent back to the EPA, the state, and ARCO. They will review it to make sure that that's what we agreed upon. And then it will be released for the public to review. At the same time, the council of commissioners will be getting the document. And after we receive the documents, there will be an explanation of what's going on. And then the following week, there will be several public meetings to explain what's in there, some questions and answers. And then it will be, the council of commissioners will start some public hearing process on it. Probably have three public meetings here in the council chambers on it in three weeks. So everyone will have plenty of time to ask their questions and review it. And then, once it's agreed upon, then, or the council will be asked to give me permission to sign it. Once that's done, it will go back to the Department of Justice to lodge with the judge. Judge Haddon will take it at that time and then open it up. Once he reviews it, he'll open it up to a public comment period once again. And then, once all that, that period ends, he will take all of the public comment and review them and then make a decision on the document at that time. So there's still a lengthy process that has to go through. It will be very public once it gets started and we'll have plenty of time to make comments on it. The next thing I just want to bring up is Thanksgiving being on the Thursday after the last Wednesday of this month, the 20, we will not meet on the 27th. There will be, it'll be on the 26th that week, a Tuesday. And because of the holidays, the deadline for getting the communications in will probably be moved back, you know, to like Tuesday of that week to Wednesday. So there will be emails going out on that when that deadline is. Next, we'll move into section one, bid openings, public hearings and/or presentations. Section one was public hearing, petition number 19-02, Patrick Reardon, Land Systems Administrator, requesting council of commissioners authorize the chief executive to approve a petition to close and vacate an alleyway. Has been filed with the Land Systems Division of the Planning Department, is provided for and within ordinance number 362. Do we have proof of publication?
Mr. Chief Executive, we do have proof of publication and it does appear to be in order.
Thank you. Mr. Reardon, do you have a staff report?
Chief Executive Palmer and members of the council, I'm Patrick Reardon, your Butte Silver Bow Land System Administrator, here to provide a staff report regarding petition number 19-02, request from major enterprises of Butte, affiliate of the Town Pump Corporation. I believe you have hard copies of this map as well, the one up on the screen. Major Enterprises is asking to close and vacate a public alleyway separating the 500 blocks of South Idaho and South Montana streets. Major Enterprises requesting this closure as part of their new redevelopment project which surrounds their current store location at 531 South Montana Street. And Major Enterprises of Butte is the sole property owner of all parcels adjacent to this alleyway.
Thank you. Any questions for Pat from the council? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing and call for proponents. Do we have any proponents? Any proponents? Third and final call for proponents. We'll move to opponents. Are there any opponents? Any opponents? Third and final call for opponents. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and go into section two, communication 19-509. Karen Burns, Community Development Director, requesting council of commissioners to request time on the November 6, 2019 council agenda to hold a public hearing on the ordinance established in the Harrison Avenue South Urban Renewal Area with a tax increment financing provision. Ms. Burns, oh, do we have proof of publication?
Mr. Chief Executive, there is proof of publication and it does appear to be in order.
Thank you. Now, Ms. Burns.
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer and members of council. I am Karen Burns, Director of Community Development for Butte Silver Bow. We're here tonight to hold a public hearing regarding the proposed urban renewal district and we're displaying a map of the boundaries that we've established. This district is something that we've talked about for many years in terms of economic and community development in Butte. And now, I believe it's the right time to try to get this established and done. So we're going through the process of establishing boundaries. We've talked to this body before about the steps that we're going through. We've written an urban renewal plan. I believe you've all received a copy of that draft. We held a public meeting down at the Butte Plaza Mall and took comment from folks in the public about what they'd like to see in the area. The urban renewal plan that we've drafted has established some goals in it and the goals are very overarching and that's the way we want to write it so that we can participate in lots of different kinds of projects within this district. There are to invest in public infrastructure, foster economic growth within the area, and leverage all the resources that we can, focusing on existing businesses in the area, helping them grow, and also recruitment of new businesses into the area. The very first step in the process that we went through was finding blight in the area and passing a resolution of decessity, which happened earlier this year in front of this body. As before this public hearing, the requirement was that we noticed all the property owners within the district. So we did send out over 570 letters to all of the property owners within the district. We've held a meeting with the school district about this new development area. And so tonight is our chance to hear from those who we've noticed or asked questions. Any of you have questions about the next steps in the process or what we would be going through? Tonight's our chance to do that. From here, there is an ordinance in front of this body also that finishes the establishment of the district and adopts the plan. And so that is set to be finalized on November 20th in front of this body. So I just wanted to kind of go through kind of where we've come from, where we're headed. And we can answer, Janet Cornish is our consultant here. She's here tonight. We can answer any questions you may have. And also, obviously, we're here to take public comment on the, on the district.
Karen, before we start, I think there's been some confusion created by a news report that as soon as we pass this, there's going to be money available for curb and gutter and sidewalk replacement. And could you just explain that the money isn't, there is no money available for that until an increment is created? And just briefly explain how that works?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Yes, and members of council, I'd be happy to explain that. So when this district is created and we establish what is called a tax increment financing provision, that would allow us to start down the road of collecting possible increases in property tax values within the district. Again, this is not a new tax on anyone or a new fee or a new assessment, but what it would do would be allow us to capture increased payments in that district of property taxes, portion of property taxes over the years, and then direct those revenues into public infrastructure projects like curb, gutter, and sidewalk. But we also, by the establishment of the district, it also allows us to leverage other funding sources for those kinds of public projects, either through grants or other debt service kinds of vehicles. And so, we don't have any money right away, once we establish a district. I wish that would be the case because we'd have projects, we'd be ready to go. But what it does is it allow us to have the vehicle to get those projects done, probably sooner than we would normally, if that helps answer the question.
I think it does. Are there any good questions from the council for Karen or Janet? Commissioner Sorge.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Karen, could you explain to us why the airport was omitted from the boundary?
Thank you, Commissioner Sorge and members of council, Mr. Chief Executive. On the map that you see above displayed, and also I think you have them in your packets, the airport property is designated by the light green shaded area. There is a very large parcel of airport property that is included within the boundary. You'll see it just north of the cemetery there, below the pink strip. And so that is a piece of property that we have over the last many years actually, is a marketable piece of property owned by the airport. It's a piece of property they can actually sell. Some of their other property, they're not able to sell, and it is part of a much larger parcel, which means it would increase the size of the district by over 400 acres if we were to include all of it. So our logic, and this is a question that has come up, our logic is that our boundary is along a lot of the airport property that could possibly be marketable. You'll see some there up in the top corner of the screen where it says Basin Creek, along Howard Avenue. So by our boundary being where it is on Howard Avenue, we would be able to participate with connecting infrastructure into that airport property. When we've talked to folks about the marketability of that property, the major hindrances have been access and utilities or public infrastructure utilities. By our boundary being where it is, we can still participate in those things for a possible development of that airport property. So I believe we're doing the best of both worlds by including our boundary where it is, including some of the property we know the airport can sell, but some of the other property is part of a much larger parcel, like I said, which would kind of make our district sort of unwieldy in a way. So I think we're doing the right thing here.
Thank you. Any further questions from the council? Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. Karen, refresh my memory a little bit. I understand that the Sunset Road is the border out there to the south. When the TED district was developed, how far does that come up to the north? Where does the, you know what I'm saying? Okay, how much is in between there? Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Fisher, Mr. Chief Executive, and members of council. So I'm not, I'm not remembering exactly where that line is, but I believe it's south of, it's south of where Lydia's is on Harrison Avenue. So I'm trying to think of that cross street. But I do know that it does include the old Acadia, the site of Acadia. It does come up that far, but not much farther than that.
Commissioner Frederiksen.
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. Ms. Burns, speaking of sunset, when does this district sunset? Or is there a time period when, what's the time length of the district before we'd have to reapprove it?
Thank you, Commissioner Frederiksen and members of council, Mr. Chief Executive. So when you create a district, the life of the tax increment provision is 15 years. So we would be looking to create this district with a base year of 2019, and the tax increment provision would sunset 15 years from then.
Thank you, Mr. Chief, thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Karen, thank you. Question, could you, other areas or other cities that have done this, can you give me an example? And I, that have kind of done the same thing so we can even the more, so we can kind of see what the possibilities are? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Neill, members of council, and Mr. Chief Executive. Many. So Missoula currently has, I believe, eight or nine districts. I could be wrong. Nine districts currently in Missoula that are in existence. Missoula, Bozeman also has, I think, at least five districts in existence, depending on the different types. Urban renewal districts, in Butte alone, we have two urban renewal districts and two economic development districts, an industrial district and a TED. So multiple projects, multiple different uses. But I can give you an example. In Missoula right now, in one of their districts in downtown Missoula, in and around Higgins Avenue, if you were to stand on the Higgins area, Higgins Bridge, you would be able to see at least four very highly visible projects that were done in Missoula as a result, or as a partnership with tax increment financing in one of their downtown urban renewal districts. Their parking garage that is just near the Holiday Inn Downtown, that was a urban renewal project. The new library, which is across the street to the north. The new student housing complex is also one of their projects. And they're a new project that you've probably seen some hype about recently in the news, is their Civic Center Entertainment Project. That is also a TIF urban renewal project. So very successful in lots of different places, and that's just Missoula alone and just one of their districts. I'd be happy to talk about other projects too, but we've used it very effectively here in Butte as well, with our parking garage, the Northwestern, New Northwestern Energy Building, Herbert Tower, Metals Bank, you know, the list goes on and on, all the way down to very small projects. 5518 Designs is one of our projects. The Mongolian Grill is one of our projects. So it's, it's a tool that we can use for all different levels of private partnerships, public-private partnerships, but also for public infrastructure. So it's a, it's a really effective, useful tool for, for communities.
Any further questions from the council? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing and call for proponents. Do we have any proponents? Any proponents? Third and final call for proponents. Yeah, yeah. Well, if you come up to the, or, yeah, to speak as a proponent? Just state your name and your address.
Matt Buckley, Butte, Montana, with Shea Realty. I just wanted to let you know, Chief Executive Palmer and commissioners, that there are several developers anxious to develop properties in the areas at which we spoke, and specifically Paxton and Meadowlark. But there isn't any water to it. Water is about 900 feet away. Montana Housing Solutions would like to put in a 36-unit apartment complex. So just wanted to let you know that, and water is the problem. So.
Okay, thank you, Matt.
Yeah, you bet.
Any other proponents? Seeing none, we'll move to opponents. Are there any opponents? Can you just state your name and address for the record, please?
Janice Mickey, 3210 Carter. I'm right in the middle of that district. I just want to remind you that there are old roads there and they're narrow. So if you come in and put in, in curbs and boulevards and all that stuff, that's going to make those roads really narrow. And we have bus, school buses going through there. We have city bus going through there. And people have to park on the street. And so it's going to be kind of a hard place to go if you put all that stuff through. Also, I want to know what it's going to do for older people who live in that area and cannot afford higher taxes. It's, and I want to also object to the fact that you called it a blighted area. I really, really resent that. If you, I walk around that area almost every day because I go for a walk. It is not blighted. Granted, all the houses are not real nice, but I would not call it a blighted area. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other opponents? Any third and final call for opponents? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And we're going to move the other bid opening up from to be read and acted upon to this section now, which is communication 19-511. Dan Dennehy, Emergency Management Director, requesting council of commissioners to hold a bid opening on November 6, 2019 regarding the purchase of a new tactical armored incident response vehicle. Do we have proof of publication?
Mr. Chief Executive, we do have proof of publication and it does appear to be in order.
Thank you. Sheriff Lester, the floor is yours. They must have put it in an armored envelope. I hope we don't have to call Dan Dennehy.
This first bid is from Teradyne Armored Vehicles, New Market, Canada. The first bid is 298, 298,000.
And Mr. Chief Executive, there is a bid, bid security in the, from, in a cashier's check in the amount of 10% of the bid. That appears to be in order.
Thank you. The total bid is $286,413. Not sure what the location is from. The Armored Group, Saddle Rock Drive, Phoenix, Arizona, is the third bid. This one is from Lenco Armored Vehicles, Pittfield, Maine.
And Mr. Chief Executive, there is a bid bond in the amount of 10% from a licensurity company that appears to be in order.
The total bid is $286,413. It's a smart bond, so I guess it's smarter than shit. Let's see, this one. It's bonded for right here.
And Mr. Chief Executive, there is a bid bond in the amount of 10% from a licensurity company that appears to be in order.
Thank you. There was a number here somewhere. This one is from Bat, APX. Not sure what the location is from. The Armored Group, Saddle Rock Drive, Phoenix, Arizona, is the third bid. warranty information. That's the bond. Pricing, I bet that's it. This bid is $291,179. And those are the three that we have. Thank you. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I would move that we refer these bids back to the LEBC, Dan Dennehy's, the EOC Department, for their review and to come back to this body with their recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion made in second to refer the bids back to Dan Dennehy for a report back to the council. On the question, Commissioner Mankins.
Counselor Palmer, did we know what the grant was, or how much it was?
Yes.
Ed, you remember what the grant was for?
Three, three, $305,000.
$305,000. Thank you. Anything else on the question? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote?
Eleven yay and zero nay.
Motion carries. Next, we'll go to the consent agenda, A 1 through 4, and B 1 through 20. Are there any segregations or friendly amendments? Commissioner Olson.
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. I would like to segregate in Section 2, Communication 2019-531.
Okay. Any other segregations? See none. Commissioner Shaw.
Mr. Chief Executive, at this time, I move to approve Section 2, Consent Agenda A 1 through 4, and B 1 through 20, with the exception of item 20, that's 19-531.
Second.
We have a motion made in second to approve the consent agenda, A 1 through 4, and B 1 through 20, exclusive of number 20. Is there anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote?
Eleven yay and zero nay.
Motion carries. We'll go to Communication number 20. Communication 19-531. John Sesso, Superfund Coordinator, requesting Council of Commissioners authorize the Chief Executive to sign Addendum Number 4 to the allocation agreement between Butte Silverbow and the Atlantic Richfield Company. Commissioner Olson.
Thank you, Chief Executive. I'd like to call on Superfund Coordinator John Sesso and have him explain the financials behind this request.
Mr. Sesso.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, members of the council. For the record, John Sesso, Superfund Coordinator, Butte Silverbow. The, the letter that you have in front of you and the amendment that has been drawn up is, is fairly straightforward. As I say in the letter, this is basically ARCO's request based on a cash flow situation. What I did to just give you a little background is that handout, everybody got a copy now? The 2006 allocation agreement provided for five different trusts. The trusts are as they're listed there: the Superfund Programs Trust, the Multi-Pathway Trust, the third is the Superfund Management Programs Trust, the fourth is the Capital Improvements, and the fifth is Groundwater Treatment. What's listed there is the amount of money that was ceded into the trusts in 2006, and then an amendment in 2012. That third column of numbers is the total amount that was invested. And then, over these 13 years, since we started the allocation agreement from the middle of fiscal year 2007 through this past June, that column, that fourth column represents the amount of money that we have expended from the trust, taking the money out as we've expended it. And the last column on the right is the amount of money that is currently in each trust presently. As you can see, we have ceded the trusts, ARCO ceded the trusts with about $38 million between the two investments in '07 and, and in '12. We've expended approximately $29,400,000 to perform work on these various programs. And, you know, because of the investments' performance, the interest earned, there's currently $37 million, 37.6 million in current market value, if we would have cashed everything in on September 30th, anyway. Today, it's probably different, but maybe a little more, maybe a little less. But that's the, that's the status of all five trust accounts. Just a couple more details. The last one, the groundwater treatment system, never was. We, we haven't spent any money out of that because we didn't agree to take on the tasks of the groundwater collection and treatment system. We didn't feel it was ready for prime time in '06. It has been substantially improved since then, but it's still the prerogative of Butte Silverbow in whether or not we would take on that responsibility, and so far, we have not. Likewise, under the Superfund Programs Trust on top, the Groundwater Collection and Treatment O&amp;M is, is also not an obligation that we have taken on, but in 2006, they did cede the trust with the amount of money necessary to take care of those obligations. ARCO has not taken any money out of the trust accounts to perform those two tasks. They've done that all offline, and that's why the Superfund Programs Trust is pretty healthy, because they ceded it with far more funds than we needed to perform our duties over these many years. And of course, they're taking care of the capital repair and replacement of the lagoon system on their own without tapping into this trust. So that brings us to the request. They approached us last month and said they would like to add to the trust, specifically the top two, the Superfund Programs Trust and the Multi-Pathway Program, with an additional $4 million. So that amount would be added to the, to the last column. And the Programs Trust would be increased from 17.9 to 21.9, and the Multi-Pathway would be increased from 6.6 to 10.6. That's the tall and short of it. I mean, they, they just, they're looking at some serious cash and expenditure obligations, starting in 2020, to fulfill the obligations as they're set forth in the consent decree. And they wanted to get a head start on a couple of the obligations that they have already out. They have Butte Silverbow under this agreement with us, and so they said, would you mind receiving $4 million in each of those two trusts into the trust account? And of course, it's, it's good. It just gives us further assurance that the obligations that are set forth in the agreement will be met, and we'll have the resources to perform long into the future. As I pointed out in the letter, this is sort of a one-off deal. They're, they're putting more money in, and if you read the, the amendment carefully, it does just that. It just adds the $4 million into the two trusts. It doesn't change any of the other terms of our allocation agreement. And I just want to assure you that we have not negotiated any other terms of the agreement. We still have the backstop. As you all know, or, or as we'll continue to try to inform you, this allocation agreement was built on one main principle, and that is if ever the funds run out from these trusts, and Butte Silverbow has done, we have fulfilled our obligations up until that point, our obligations are, are no more. ARCO has to take back the obligations and fund the responsibilities on their own, or give us more money for us to, to do it. So that was a key principle of the allocation agreement. It was the reason your predecessors agreed to sign the allocation agreement, so that we could perpetually get work done, but also insulate our taxpayers from any costs associated with the performance of any duties under the, under the agreement. So at, I could talk for another six, seven hours on it, but...
That's quite all right.
If you have any other questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Thank you, John. I mean, it's like unanticipated revenue. We love to get money. I don't think we'd ever say no, but are there any restrictions on how this extra money can be used, or is just putting a general fund on, in these categories?
Mr. Chief Executive, members of the council, Commissioner Shaw, the, the use of the funds, it has to stay consistent with the trusts. So in the case of the Superfund Program Trusts, the dollars have to be spent on the maintenance of the caps and the maintenance of the stormwater facilities on the hill. And in the case of the Multi-Pathway Program, it, it has to be spent in implementing, continuing to implement, and expand the implementation of the RMAP program. So that's all set forth in the allocation agreement. The way we do this is every three months, Butte Silverbow draws from the trust. It's, it's like a annuity. And we have in our budget that you guys approve, we have our annual budget, and so we draw 25% of that budget out of the trust four times a year. And so it, it's just increasing really the principal and the interest-bearing account. We still have to do the same amount of duties, and it'll just allow us to do it that much longer.
All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Sorik.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. John, is this money going to aid and help and expand that RMAP program to be countywide?
Excuse me?
Is this funding going to be part of the expansion of the RMAP program, to be more of a countywide program, or a versus?
The, Mr. Chief Executive, the, there's not a direct correlation between putting the $4 million in the Multi-Pathway Trust and its expansion, but as we made clear in, in the spring, in the proposed plan, the, the consent decree calls for the business of expanding the Residential Metals Abatement Program, or I should say, the process does. And so the, the precursor of that future is, is, is kind of clear. There's already $6 million in there. We spend approximately $1.3 million a year to implement the program. So certainly, these $4 million will go to implement the current program, and once there's agreement on the expansion, it'll be used for that as well.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. Thank you, John. Appreciate the information. Is this $4 million some way mandated by the EPA to give Butte Silverbow this $4 million for this program, or is ARCO just, from the kindness of their heart, saying here's $4 million?
Mr. Chief Executive, members of the council, Commissioner Fisher, first, it's four and four, so it's 8 million. There's four in each of the accounts. The best way I can answer it is that ARCO has to, under the terms of the consent decree, they have to provide financial assurance to the federal government that they can afford and have the necessary resources to fulfill all the obligations that are in the consent decree. Well, one of those obligations, two of those obligations, one of them is to maintain the remedy in, in the forever, perpetually, and they have an allegation agreement with us for us to help them do that. And it's going to cost more than the, the amount of money that's in the trust currently. Same with the RMAP program. As I just explained, the, the, the cost of the program, you know, you just do the math here in that second row. We've, we ceded the trust with 11.4 million. We've spent 11 million since 2006. There's 6.6 million left. They, they got to put more money in there for us to be able to continue to do that program. So... So they would have had to put more money in these accounts, otherwise, they would have had to pay us later, pay me now, pay me later situation, regardless of whatever EPA would order them to do. But I, I should report that these dollars in these five trusts, they're part of ARCO's financial assurance package to EPA so that if somehow ARCO and by extension Butte Silver Bow as settling defendants were to default on anything and the federal government had to take over all the work, these dollars and some serious bonds that the ARCO is going to have to put up under the consent decree would, would be pulled then, and the federal government would do the work. So indirectly, the obligations that are outlined in the consent decree are pretty substantial in terms of financial obligations, and this is a part of that.
Follow-up, Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. So as we as commissioners don't know a lot about the consent decree, I mean, you know, you know where we're sitting in this event, I guess my question goes back to the original question is, you said the federal government, that would be the EPA, so the EPA must be telling ARCO that they have to either, you know, I'm sure ARCO just didn't say, here's $4 million or $8 million to, you know, put in your trust account. So I, I guess, I guess I'm a little skeptical of people bearing gifts in a situation like this, so I'm sure that somewhere in the consent decree, which is probably private to most of us, that EPA must have said to ARCO, you better seed that account. I just don't think ARCO would come out and put $4 million in one and $4 million in the other. So I guess my question is, in your mind, even if you can't state it, do you feel that the EPA forced ARCO to pay this money?
Mr. Chief Executive, I, I don't think that the, well, yeah.
Any further questions for John? Commissioner Olson.
Thank you, Chief Executive. Thanks, John. Now, I guess one of the things that, in that discussion that you had with, with Commissioner Fisher, this really isn't, this, this money really isn't directly related to the CD because we don't have the CD signed yet. Is that a correct statement? And that there are additional documents in the CD that will outline the ongoing financial obligations outlined by the CD. And so this is what we've got today, and if the CD isn't signed, we still have this money.
Mr. Chief Executive, that's generally correct. The, the performance of the duties under the Superfund Programs and the Multi-Pathway Program are already known and understood by the community. Under the CD, as was announced in the spring, we're looking to expand both. There's going to be more acres that are going to be reclaimed. There's going to be more Superfund Stormwater Structures that are going to have to be maintained, and we're going to expand the RMAP program. What I was going to say earlier is that ARCO is not being compelled to put this money in these trusts today. This is their cash flow business to try to spread out their obligations. But if, if, and you're right, it's correct to say if there's no consent decree, these two accounts will have more money in them, which means our obligations will last that much longer into the future. But if there is a consent decree and it gets approved, additional monies are going to be necessary to be placed in these trusts for Butte Silver Bow to fulfill its obligations under the consent decree. So it's a little bit in flux, but they definitely relate it.
Okay. Mr. Fisher.
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. Thank you, John. I appreciate all you do. I'm just being a little inquisitive here, but so any of this money that comes into any of these programs here, they come with contingencies. I mean, in other words, we are not free, we can't just take that money and go fix our roads and do stuff. These come with contingencies that are set forth in the agreement by ARCO and the EPA and whoever else might be involved, State of Montana, whoever. That's what the point I'm trying to clarify is, we're getting this money, but this money has strings attached to it. Is that kind of a layman's way of saying this, is this money's going like the RMAP program and, you know, the other things like that, the water quality district, things like that? So that money, when people get a little confused thinking, oh, yeah, we got $4 million. Wow, you know, this is going to, you know, why don't you go and fix my street or, you know, fix my sewer line or put a water line in, like I've had people earlier. The thing about this, the money comes with contingencies that it can be used only for certain things, and them are drawn out with the money as it comes. Is that correct?
That is correct. I would only, Mr. Chief Executive, I would only, and it's a good point to make, Commissioner Fisher, because this side of the ledger on the allocation agreement is about obligations. These are dollars that are earmarked to fulfill work programs that we've agreed to do if there's sufficient resources to do them. And that's distinct from that other side of the ledger, and that's the redevelopment trust. That's, those are different dollars that give us a lot more flexibility as per SADA's decision-making, but you're spot on in, in how you describe it.
Okay. Any further questions? Commissioner Olson.
Thank you, Chief Executive. I would like to make motion to concur and place on file communication number 19-531.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to concur in a request in communication 19-531 and place the communication on file. Is there anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote?
We have 11 aye and 0 nay.
Motion carries. Next, we'll go to Section 3. We have one more communication. That's communication 19-515 from Chuck Merrifield, Chairman Parks and Recreation Board, requesting council of commissioners to read the attached letter. Let's see, yeah, to read the attached letter, be read and acted upon by the Butte Silver Bow Council of Commissioners. Attached to this communication is also the 2009 Parks Trails and Open Space Master Plan along with the 2012 Master Plan Accomplishment Document. Mr. Merrifield could not be here this evening, and he asks that we hold his communication until the November 20th meeting, which we will do. Section 4, Ordinances and Resolutions, second reading. Number one, Council Bill Number 19-12, Ordinance 19-12. Will the clerk please read the title?
Council Bill Number 19-12, Council Ordinance Number 19-12. An ordinance establishing the Butte Silver Bow Harrison Avenue South Urban Renewal Area, creating the Butte Silver Bow Harrison Avenue South Urban Renewal District, and adopting the Butte Silver Bow Harrison Avenue South Urban Renewal Plan with a tax increment financing provision pursuant to Title VII, Chapter 15, Part 42 and 43 of the Montana Code Annotated, and providing for an effective date herein.
Thank you. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. This time, I move to place Council Bill Number 19-12, Ordinance 19-12, on second reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to pass Council Bill 19-12, Ordinance 19-12, on second reading. Is there anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote?
This does not work, by the way, for voting.
No, anyone wishing to change? Will the clerk please record the vote?
We have 11 aye and 0 nay.
Motion carries. Section 5, Ordinances and Resolutions, final reading. Number one, Council Resolution Number 19-64. Will the clerk please read the title?
Council Resolution Number 19-64, a resolution granting conditional approval of the final plat of the Thomas Davis Minor Subdivision expedited review of the city and county of Butte Silver Bow, State of Montana, providing for the repeal of all parts of resolutions in conflict herewith, and providing for an effective date herein.
Thank you. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I move to place Council Resolution 19-64 on final reading and passed, having been read fully length, fully read at length.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to pass Council Resolution 19-64 on final reading. Is there anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? The clerk, please record the vote.
11 aye and 0 nay.
Number two, Council Resolution 19-65. Will the clerk please read the title?
Council Resolution Number 19-65, a resolution granting conditional approval of the amended plat of Lot 19 of the Ridgeview 2 subdivision of the city and county of Butte Silver Bow, State of Montana, providing for the repeal of all parts of the resolutions in conflict herewith, and providing for an effective date herein.
Thank you. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. This time, I move to place Council Resolution 19-65 on final reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to pass Council Resolution 19-65 on final reading. Is there anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote?
11 aye and 0 nay.
Number three, Council Resolution 19-66. Will the clerk please read the title?
Council Resolution Number 19-66, a resolution vacating, closing, discontinuing, and abandoning streets and alleys located in the Big Butte Edition, Fairway Edition, Great Western Edition, Lawlor Edition, Stanley Edition, and the Vanderbilt Edition of the official plat of the city and county of Butte Silver Bow, Montana, specifically the northwest quarter of Section 14, Township 3 North, Range 8 West, more particularly described in Exhibit A and depicted on maps attached and denoted on Exhibit B 1 through B 5, finding the necessary facts herein and prescribing for the effective date of this resolution.
Thank you. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I move to place Council Resolution 19-66 on final reading and passed, having been read fully length.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to pass Council Resolution 19-66 on final reading. Is there anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote?
11 aye and 0 nay.
Motion carries. Now is the time for any public comment on any public matter not on the agenda. Ed.
I am the banner on 2601 Grand Avenue, continuing my frivolous comment filibuster. Under our current form of government, this council is supposed to be the proactive policy-determining body of this government and the independent checks and balances of our local government. In the nine years that I have been attending these council of commissioners meeting, it has been neither. Not once can I remember that this body has ever called for a before-the-fact policy-determining listening session. Not once can I remember that this body has ever created its own independent special committee to research and issue and recommend to this council a common solution to a common concern. All that has been done in the vast majority of instances in the past is for the executive branch's staff to make a recommendation, and this body rubber stamps it. The task of properly researching and doing due diligence and determining what is the proper, what is being proposed is most apparently and beneficial, appropriate and beneficial will most probably be beyond the time and availability capacities of you individuals when you receive the CD. You are faced with an extremely complex issue, with one of the most far-reaching and significant decisions that this council will probably ever make. Yet you have not even considered creating your own independent Superfund Special Committee to take the information that is being given to you and hash through it in different small groups, which I am assured is allowed in Section 3.5 of the Butte Silver Bow City-County Charter. You can make your own rules as far as substitute or special committees. To reach the issue proposed, the appropriate questions to be asked, I haven't heard any questions, well, I've heard a few, but not very many, to the Superfund staff, let alone delve into the separate aspects of the issue and make a consensual decision and recommendation to this council from a legislative prospect as to what would be most beneficial decision considering all the aspects of the issue. It is stipulated in the Butte Silver Bow City-County Charter, Section 3.3(c), that this council is to employ an attorney. The county attorney should be focused on enforcement and on protecting the city-county of Butte Silver Bow from any frivolous lawsuits. The council attorney should be focused on creation and on pleading the case of the people. Commissioner Fisher is right. You need to have the discussion. In fact, according to the Butte Silver Bow City-County Charter, Section 3.03l, you are to evaluate annually the success of the government in achieving its goals. In the nine years that I have been sitting here in this council, I have yet to hear any discussion relative to the evaluation carried out by the government. You do not even have a committee designated to fulfill this function. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment on any matter not on the agenda? Seeing none, Commissioner Shaw.
I move to adjourn.
Second. Motion made and seconded to adjourn. Anything on the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Thank you.